Is that recorded?
It is.
Yes. All right, this is the October tenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Monmouth Planning Board. All the members of the board are here in the alternate, so we have a we have a quorum. Our September minutes aren't available yet, so we'll table those to our next meeting. The first thing I want to do is to introduce everyone to Isabel, who's been working with us on Monmouth's comp plan and is now also the town planner for Monmouth. So she will be assisting the planning board. When applications come in, she'll review them, she'll help applicants understand what the process is. And as the planning board members know, she did a summary for us for tonight's meeting. Most of the meetings, she's not going to be here, she may zoom in or, you know, we'll see how that goes. I mean, I think we're planning on what, eight hours a month? Is that what we?
We're already over that.
Yeah. And so, you know, the transition has been a little rough. You know, because it's all new. And code enforcement has an electronic submission set up for their permitting, and we're hoping to get on that, and that's going to be a time saver for both people that need to get different permits, whether from the planning board or the code enforcement. So I think that's going to smooth things quite a bit. So there's a few kind of housekeeping items before we get right into the agenda. Before our last meeting, but not within the required period, we received an application from Jellystone Campground. And it just, you know, even though we said at the last meeting, we were going to put it on the agenda for tonight, that didn't happen. So as to kind of move that along, Isabel and I have talked about, maybe we should have a special meeting just to accept that application before the November meeting.
If I could add, that part is mostly the shuffle, and I'll take responsibility. There was an application that was missed, so just because it was our mistake and not anything on the applicant's part, they fully met the deadline, and I think submitted actually back in early September. We're hoping that you might be amenable to a special meeting if we can get a quorum, and that would be the initial review for completeness, not a full public hearing, which would need to be noticed with appropriate timeframes.
So looking at the town calendar, the thirty-first is available. So I would think it would be like a half hour. So if people think they could meet that, you know, at least if we could get a quorum, then I would suggest, because next week is available, but we really don't. It's going to take us a while to get something posted. The other thing that you may all remember, so the Jellystone project is in Wayne, Leeds, and Monmouth. Leeds sent us kind of an invitation for their site visit, which is, I think, on the twenty-first at four o'clock. I mean, that wouldn't have been enough time, even if we were on the agenda for a Monmouth site visit, but I think I'm going to try to make that on the twenty-first.
That's interesting.
That's at the park.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock. And then I think the meeting in Leeds is at six o'clock. They're having it on their agenda.
Won't four o'clock be dark?
What, is the time change? Or does the time change on how, around the end of the month?
Yeah, it's the end of next week after that.
So it's November first, Sunday, Saturday in November.
First Saturday night in September.
In November.
Yeah. So how do people feel about a special meeting on the thirty-first? Can anyone make that or not make it?
Okay, is that, that would be a Thursday.
It'd be a Thursday night.
That's Halloween night.
It's Halloween night.
Yeah.
I have procedures, I don't know if I can or not.
Yeah, well, as long as we can get at least three members here.
Might be able to zoom in.
What time?
I'd say seven o'clock.
Okay. I can make it.
I can.
All right, so we got enough that we can, and as I say, I think it's just, since we bowed up, we'll just give them the opportunity to kind of give a brief overview again, and we accept the application, then we send out all the notices and set the fee and do all the stuff we're supposed to do. So if you could add that.
That'll be enough time to send a notice to make it for the next meeting?
Yes, we wouldn't need to send the, a butter's notices, but we would post it at the town office and on the town website with all the information.
So after the thirty-first, well, we can look at their a butter list and check it, and so we'll be ready to go.
I have it, and they've already paid a fee, Steve.
Oh, they did pay the fee?
Yes.
The old fee? Was it on the new schedule?
He said he found something online on a new schedule, it's an email from him.
We'll have to review it, see if it's an appropriate amount.
Yeah, how many? How many a butter?
Monmouth a butter? I think there was like either ten, maybe?
There isn't that many.
Yeah. Hands down there.
Yeah.
But, and I can forward everyone, I think we forwarded this email, that came in, actually in September. But they have a, they have a sidewalk and public hearing, so.
And it's on the town website calendar as well?
Yeah, so. So that will take care of that Jellystone, we'll let them know thirty-first. Everyone get that application? If not, we'll.
They're, they're at the town office, like, they sent in nine copies.
Yeah, okay. If anyone wants to stop, they need a copy. An electronic one. Okay. So then the other thing is, all right, let's just go through old business. Lake Star, as far as we know, we haven't heard anything further, we've been tabling that until DEP makes a decision, we haven't heard anything.
They have not gotten a decision from them. Yeah, they, the architect, the owner, all visited the office at DEP and up to the sheet rock.
Yeah. We'll, we'll we have a motion just to continue to table that till the next meeting and.
Make a motion to table it.
All in favor? Tabled. Kennebec County, the Soul, Soul America Project. So at the last meeting, they came in, I was a little concerned that the notices, the notice may not have gone out to some of the interested parties, and I know some are here tonight on that. They had, just so, for those in the audience or people who weren't here at the last meeting, they have asked us to consider whether what they propose for screening would be comparable to the requirements of the ordinance, and there's a section in our ordinance that sort of opens the door to that. So I think we had suggested to them that we really needed some more detail. You know, were they agreeable that they wouldn't do construction for a period of time? How would they handle plantings that didn't take or that died or things like that? They were going to make a submission, they didn't, Isabel reached out to them. And my understanding is that a lot of their team is in Florida and has been affected by the storm. So I think this is another situation that we would table this to our November meeting. If people.
Make a motion to table it.
Okay. All in favor of tabling it?
Are they supposed to notice by us every time that they're coming up here or?
Yeah, well, you, it's tabled to the next meeting, so I would suggest come, come to the, it's not going to be at the special meeting we're happening.
I didn't know if they were supposed to be letting us know.
There's not a requirement for that, you know, once, once we give the first notice, supposedly the burden is on people to check our agenda. Yeah, you know, let people know that. So.
Okay, I'm just curious if they were supposed to be, because they're not.
Yeah, no, that's, you know, that's the way the ordinance is currently, so. So will we back here, see if they do something by that next meeting?
And, sorry, I can.
No, go ahead.
Just for the public, that would be November fourteenth at seven.
Yeah, it's the same night as the last meeting, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
I'd rather be up here than down there.
This is a little more important right now.
Yeah, this is more important.
If you provide an email, we can send you what, what they filed the last time, did you get that?
No, I never got that.
Okay.
We also, just so you know, I'll just announce it to the group. I was working to update the planning board's website, and there's now a link to a Google Drive folder with all of the application materials for, for every project, actually, that at least has crossed my desk, some of which the planning board hasn't even gotten to yet. So if you ever have a question about where something is, it's now in that folder, it's accessible from the website.
Steve, do you want me to put my email on where I signed in at?
Yeah, why don't you do that, that way? You can double check to.
Thanks.
All right, I think that brings us to the last item C under old business, which is the home project on Laurel Lane to repair building that was damaged by the storm. Barge the footprint to have an addition. It's no closer to the shore. Anything changed since the site visit? We had a site visit, I don't know if it was two weeks ago. And I can't remember who was there. Larry, myself.
I did my own.
Bill Monagle was there. And Bill made some oral comments, but I hadn't seen a letter. We asked for the photographs that are required, so I don't know if everyone has.
Just came in for them.
Yeah, seeing these. But it just gives us an idea of what, you know, what we, what we saw there. Anyone need to see these?
Yes.
Yeah.
Send them down. Can you give us a synopsis of what Bill pressed?
Yeah, so what was, what we've been told is that the roof line is going to be changed. I mean, why don't you tell, because you know what you're doing for them?
Basically, well, we have a nineteen twenties camp, the usual add-on, a phone add-on, all different roof lines. We're going to change it to a standard salt box frame, third of the roof facing the lake, two-thirds to the back. Well, keep the water running towards the back or whatever. Just to kind of clean it up, and he wants to maintain it as a usable residence. This, it's falling in disrepair right now, considering basically as a storage area for a while. And we just like, take a chance now to add this thirty percent and make it a usable bunkhouse again, instead of just, it's a shame a lot of it went waste.
So Bill's, you know, sort of had his, kind of, I shouldn't say maybe standard, but, but we hear from him a lot that he would like to see some kind of like infiltration, French or stone. And maybe as best can, that can happen is to divert it in a way that it's not heading towards the lake. Problem is, it's a very small site, you know, it's. Yeah, and even the back of the building is probably less than twenty feet from the lot line, I'd say.
One or three.
Yeah. So there's not much room there. There's some slope behind.
Still a French drain can be installed.
Yes, there's room for that.
There is room, there is room to take care of the water. I have all the confidence in the world that we can take care of every drop of water coming off that roof.
How about, you know, that site, lot twelve on the side, which is also in back.
Right.
It's got a heck of a pitch from Marvel Road down to the lake.
That's correct, and, and this French drain, if it's installed properly, can still take some of that water, I feel.
And that's owned by somebody else.
And that's owned by somebody else, but it impacts this how, this camp on two sides.
Yeah, and underneath it maybe, who knows?
So right now, what happens is it just backs up on that, on that side of that, on the back of this camp.
And runs down the sides.
If it's a heavy enough rain, it'll, it'll come out. That won't happen with a French drain in place.
We'd like to cut the braid on the back side of that down by closer to two feet, because as of right now, the braid has built up over the years.
Yeah.
Is even with the floor side of camp, the upper side, we're proposing to cut at least twenty inches retaining wall and whatever we have to do for stone and green is there, maintain and carry whatever comes out through for water from either the driveway or the upper wall itself, and pick it up with a French drain that way.
All right, that's what I was wondering.
So if you remember the one on, on Pine Drive, where they, they rebuilt that retaining wall, and then they filled in from the retaining wall to the camp, which is only five feet. They filled it in with two and a half feet of stone, and there's no water. There's no water at all coming around, and that was my cousin's house.
That's what I was.
And that's, and that's, I had the same feeling, talked to the excavator that they're using. He had, he, he knows what he's, what they were doing.
Yeah, okay, that's, the other concern I had is setback from the lake is taken from the low watermark as opposed to the high watermark?
I mentioned to the, the first stones that were, so I believe it's high watermark, one corner that I believe is either twenty-one or two, uh, twenty-two feet further corner, I think it's twenty-seven. We're going to approach, obviously, watershed, we're on about an erosion control plan also after this, you know, after you've done this part of the project.
Friends of policy.
Yeah, friends of policy.
Friends of policy to put riprap in. So that's, that's going to change.
Okay.
It needs it anyway, it needs, it needs to be riprap, I mean, maybe something, it needs something.
And it's going to require some trees to be removed, which thus will require some replanting.
Yeah, Andy's up in the air about where you can.
Put a tree.
Put a tree on a postage stamp lot. He was going to mull it over, so I don't know if he ever came up with a solution. There really is no good spot on it to put a tree unless he can plant a tree on his neighbor's property behind it.
Okay, so why are what, three or four trees?
Well, one that came down.
Yeah.
You know, and, and then two or three others around it were prevention at this point. If one comes down, it opens up the area for, for more to come down. That tree was blocking three other trees.
And then I think there's one tree fairly close to the building, which we have to come.
And the one on the corner of the building, the up, the back corner of the building.
And walk and, oh, three, most of the building that needs to go, and there's three old growth pines there, or maybe four there. Leapers that were recommended by, uh, Forestry Service to come down. They have more dead wood, maybe live at this point.
Basically, the, the whole canopy is going to leave.
Well, I wouldn't say the whole canopy, but.
Well, it needs to get some sunlight in there too to help dry it out. 有利处与不利处.
Pros and cons.
Yeah, you gotta take the good with the bad sometimes, I don't know. With that postage stamp, I, I shook my head, and I think Andy did too.
Yeah, that's one of the benefits of going down to see the lot, because you could really see how small it is and how it's sort of impacted by the lot behind.
Does it make any difference that the, that he owns a water yard next door, and also both of the camps are the same owner or?
Well, they're, they're grandfathered lots, so it's not a case that these lots get merged. So. Yeah, maybe it helps him in terms of where to plant a tree or two, to kind of make up for what, what's gone.
It can only help the neighbor on that, on that other side. You know, if he can get some trees on the existing camp, that's, you know, it's going to help that camp and the neighbor's camp on that side, so. Again, you, you gotta take the good with the bad sometimes. I think if, if we can get rid of the water, we've solved the problem.
What about expansion within twenty-five feet, the high watermark?
It's going out to the side, it's not, it's not going any closer to the water.
I know he's not going any closer, but part of that is in the twenty-five foot setback.
Let's take a look at the ordinance. Yeah, I know we have to determine that this is not it would be set back to the fullest practical extent also, so there's a kind of a problem there about where we can, where you could go with that.
So can I add some, some items here? So in this area, in the general development shoreline district, the setback is actually seventy-five feet, so he's already in the setback. What the planning board's role is, is not fully to approve a shoreland permit. Your only role is to determine that the greatest practical extent that setbacks can be met on the property have been met. He's allowed to do the thirty percent expansion with the code officer, sort of regardless of what happens at this meeting. What you need to sort of figure out is if the addition can be added with setbacks being met to the greatest extent practical. And there's a couple of review items in the ordinance that I've summarized in the memo for you. Size of the lot, we've already kind of touched on that, not a lot of other place to put this. Location of other structures, uh, location of the septic system, not really applicable on this lot. Potential for soil erosion, if you're moving the property rather than adding on or expanding. And then the type and amount of vegetation proposed to be removed. So your role is sort of limited to those six standards that I just referenced and that are summarized in the draft findings that I prepared for you. Your role is not fully to look at the shoreland permit standards, like I think that you're used to. That one would be for the code enforcement officer in this case, because this is just a fully allowed structure with code enforcement approval.
Okay, so you're saying you're taking our DEP headaches away from us to a certain degree then?
Well, to a certain extent, what I did was I conditioned it on any sort of DEP approval would need to be retained by the applicant, but your role is pretty limited here.
You got any, any other standards we can dump off?
Honestly, not really, so we're, we're under twelve C three of the shoreline ordinance. Actually, it's twelve C two, referencing the standards of twelve C three related to relocation. It's a, this is weird, like, I, I understand that this is probably not what you're used to because this is a fully allowed use within the shoreline zoning district, under that table of allowed uses in the the shoreline zoning ordinance. It only goes to the code enforcement officer for approval, so our, the planning board's role is, is pretty limited there. Yeah.
We're looking at the expansion.
Or our CEO is the one that's sitting on the hot seat on.
Sort of, yep.
Okay. Yeah.
And all, all he's going to do is wait for the approval from the DEP.
Yeah.
Or, or the recommendations, now DEP in the past has mandated that forensic obviously come in and put riprap down. It might be here too, also increases the setback distance, because you're adding air earth to the, to the front of the stone to the front of the village, so, you know, I, I don't, I, I stopped second guessing DEP twenty years ago.
Well, the expansion isn't over the allowed limit. The height isn't going to exceed twenty-five feet. So I think the first issue is, you know, is this building located back to the full, fullest practical extent? Where it is, it is, you can't move it back, and it's the lot, the back lot line. You're even coaching an add or write out, if you try to.
If you move it back, you're forced to move it back, you get great water damage to the front.
You're going to lose.
Well, that's true.
That's right.
That's true. Because the plan is to not replace the foundation, just repair it in places.
It's a pretty solid foundation.
Especially with your post pads, you know, it's a little watery.
So we could have a motion that, as proposed, the setback would be met to the fullest practical extent, including the building where it's located, given the site conditions.
If you want to adopt it with the conditions that I suggested, I had a condition around erosion control, well, they have to retain that shoreline permit and the building permit from a code, the code officer. Erosion control measures need to be installed and maintained according to the DEP's Best Management Practices Manual, the crushed stone condition.
Yeah.
Any trees to be removed in order to sort of expand this structure need to be replanted with at least one native tree, three feet in height for every tree removed. The reason that that's there is that's an explicit ordinance requirement that unfortunately you don't have the authority to waive. So that's just something to be aware of, it could go on the other property that's also owned by them. And then prior to the start of construction, there needs to be a permit retained by DEP with copy provided to the code officer.
Permit by rule.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I've put together, if you are, if you've looked through my draft findings that I prepared for you, and you've heard those conditions, and you've heard the conversation, I have prepared a motion that you can utilize in the memo if you are ready.
What's the issue with the record, making that condition of approval, having some vegetation across that back property line? Any reason why that couldn't take place?
Well, we can't force the other person who is not a stakeholder. Yeah, not involved in this, we can't.
I'm talking about Mr. Cohen's property.
Is there going to be room to plant anything there other than?
Just small bush.
Just small bush, anything to take up.
Well, currently, there's a line of white pines there. They've all they're all forked and whatnot. They're gonna take out, but we could replant everything.
Yeah, I'm not talking.
On that same property.
How close to the property line is the retaining wall gonna be?
On the backside.
The backside.
Three feet or so.
So in that area above the retaining wall, you don't want to plant trees that are gonna destroy the retaining.
Right, because it's a root.
I don't know, just shrubs, just.
Detrimental to the health of the building.
There's gonna be drainage.
Blueberry bushes aren't gonna make it because it'll be no sun.
Well, the trees are leaving.
What do you mean no sun? But that whole that whole line? I don't know, you'd you'd have a tough time getting them to take. I think if we treat the water, the best way we can treat the water, and that's the stone.
Ninety nine percent of it.
Yeah.
Grabbing the water.
Grab the water.
No matter what we do, there's getting better than what's there now. It's the driveway basically runs straight down through between the two camps right into the.
Right.
There's now. What do you think now?
Did Bill make any comments?
He didn't submit anything in writing because I think he told us it was like the last one we had with him over. The last two we had at the last meeting. It was the one on Wilson Pond. And then there was one on Sand Pond that he, basically the same type of recommendation that he made on those. I meant to check with him this week, but it's just been crazy.
He's switching, if you've noticed, he's switching. He's he's treating water different way. He he's going more stone or mechanical than he's using natural. Because he's come to the realization that natural only lasts a year or two and then it could be gone.
I mean, he did, he did talk a little bit about what type of erosion control might be appropriate on the lakeside during construction. We had a little discussion about that. And again, the slope is a factor. You know, he said hay bales won't work. And there are those tubes.
The socks or erosion control mix.
Yeah, that's what he that's what he was. Yeah. I mean, a lot of times, we kind of say that's to the satisfaction of the code enforcement officer, but you might have to be a little more explicit, but.
Wouldn't their excavator also be certified in best management practices?
You would hope.
Supposed to be.
Yeah.
They are. Yeah. I checked.
But I think we have to make that explicit finding that, as proposed, the building would be with its addition would be set back to the fullest practical extent. I think we have to make that finding, so would entertain a motion on that.
I make a motion that the expansion barely has met the full extent.
Fullest practical extent. Do we have a second?
Second one.
Any discussion? All in favor of that finding that, as proposed, it would be set back to the fullest practical extent? Then the next motion would be, do we approve this with the conditions recommended by Isabel? Do we need to tweak those a little bit or you want to run through those again for the?
The conditions? Yeah, so approval is limited to the plans contained in the application. Any change in the development needs to either return to the planning board or at minimum the code enforcement officer, depending. Prior to the start of construction, the applicant needs to obtain both a shoreline permit and a building permit from the code officer. Erosion control measures need to be installed and maintained during construction, meeting the specifications in DEP's. Erosion and sediment control best management practices manual, most revised date. Crushed stones shall be added to the drip edge of the existing building and the new addition in order to minimize direct runoff to the lake. Runoff shall be directed to the existing drainage to minimize direct runoff to the lake. That is the same condition that Bill offered on a previous project.
Yeah.
Any trees removed in order to relocate or expand this structure need to be replanted with at least one native tree, three feet in height for every tree removed. That is directly tied to one of your ordinance standards. And then prior to the start of construction, the applicant needs to obtain that permit by rule from the DEP. And a copy needs to be provided to the code enforcement officer.
He doesn't get it, the copy. It automatically goes to the code enforcement officer, it doesn't go.
Great.
Doesn't go to the applicant.
Great.
And then I think I think we have to add that post-construction photographs have to be supplied. I think that's, that might have been an amendment that came up when we need the pre and post. So any amendment to those?
I think it covers the basis.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with those conditions?
I'm gonna reapprove those conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
So we'll get a written decision out. Shouldn't take too long because things set up, getting things set up. Good.
You have to see the, you have to get the application to DEP. Danny might even have an application, but it's easy to call them, they'll send you the right application.
Isn't it online now?
And it is online.
It might be online.
Yeah, call permit by rule on.
Permit by rule.
Okay.
It's easy to fill out. Do you have any questions?
Well, they'll have a good one.
So I noticed someone is on, are they muted or they?
Yes, they're muted.
Maybe we should let them see who that is in case they're waiting to.
He's just unmuted.
Okay.
Jonathan Jennings, I'm on the call. I live on twenty four Memorial Lane, and I was just interested to see what was going on with the Cohen property and the decisions that were made.
Okay, do you have any, sorry, we didn't let you in earlier. I just happened to notice you were there.
That's fine. I did, how far is the construction back from the high high watermark or the low watermark? That was my question.
Yeah, the it looks like what the plan we got is that one corner is twenty three and one twenty one. So the existing camp is, it is very close. But as you heard us discussing, there's really not any room to push that back. So it's the building that there is approved, you know, it's there. And there's not a lot we can require in terms of movement, given the small size of that grandfathered lot. So that was a lot of record before the subdivision ordinance was adopted.
Okay, I was just curious on that.
Yeah, the expansion is not making it any closer. That that we can stop, so.
Yeah.
It is, it is not going to get any closer from where it is. Actually, it might be set back if they put a foot or so of rip rap in front of it. Which I think to get under the trees that are there, they're gonna have to do that.
Yeah.
It's going to increase, not much, but it will.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
You're welcome.
What about anyone else there have questions on this matter? Are they muted or they?
Yeah, the other two are muted.
That's, but that's muted on their part.
Yeah, 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 they're muted.
So I think Jerry is Mrs. Cohen.
Yeah.
Yeah. There was Scott that's there. Okay, well, they don't say anything then. So we have no items on a new business, so as we discussed, we should have. We did get an application for that senior housing project on Main Street, but it wasn't submitted within the deadline. And given that we've got some comments already. They have come in, we thought we should go by the by the book, but it, and you know, this was sort of Isabel's first meeting that she's been formally involved in, and it just seemed like, you know, we'd be.
You don't want to throw her in the fire.
No, we want to, we want to make sure we do things right. So that will also be on the next agenda, which is will be the senior. And I think, again, there are plans on that if people want to get those. I think there's an electronic version, but.
Were there paper copies delivered?
It should have been.
I I don't know. I don't know.
Normally, when something gets delivered, Sarah sends me an email and says.
So we better chat.
Better check.
Yeah.
If not, I'll make sure. You all prefer hard copy is what I'm hearing. I'll make sure you get hard copies. We haven't, I don't think I've received them yet, but.
Okay.
So I think what I had heard is they're using Coffin Engineer.
Yes.
Usually, they're pretty thorough in what they do.
Yeah.
So we might have to look and reach out to make sure that those people, but that's another reason to.
It was Bush hog today.
Oh, was it? Yeah.
So they could put the stakes in for us. See where.
So that will be on the next meeting. We'll have a busy, we'll have a busy next November meeting, I think. So going on to other business, so when I went through, when we were sitting here last meeting, and looked back, I think it was the June minutes. And I think we allowed them to go in with something that we should have changed. And see if I can get that. And I think it was somewhat of the order of the votes. So I think Larry had made a motion. The project area needs to be fully screened. Larry made a motion, seconded by Dave, but we didn't vote. We had a discussion. And the discussion was that sort of threw it out to the applicant that you know, there was sort of a problem and did they want us to table it? Which they did. They agreed, so we didn't vote on that item. That motion and the review was tabled. So I think the minutes need to be corrected to reflect that. That.
What item?
B.
B, yeah. So if. That's voted, voted. Voted five zero. And and there was no vote. And so I think we just strike that voted five zero pass. That that should just be taken out.
Okay.
And then Soul America asked if we could table this matter. And then there was that motion to table. Now, the other thing that needs to be moved is the last sentence. Motion by Larry, seconded by David, that the application is complete. That should be moved to be the first motion.
Because you caught that at the end of that meeting and you say we never, so we did it then.
Yeah.
Last and it should have just been moved up.
Right.
I remember that, that we had forgotten to.
So it's. Okay, so you want that moved up to the very first thing?
Yeah.
Correct.
And then.
And then.
Then the motion by Larry, seconded by David, that it is not, you just take out voted five zero. Pass, you just strike, just eliminate that. Yeah, so so this this will go here.
Yep.
Or you could even put it maybe here. Well.
You can do it.
Well, maybe here, wait a minute, the next step, no, no, it should go here. So it should go here that the application is complete. And then the next step.
Was to go through the soul project, right?
So move the completion up there. Then take out that voted on that motion, just get rid of that.
Get rid of what? Get rid of this.
Get rid of this. That, get rid of.
It is not, okay.
That, because that was tabled.
Okay.
And of course, see what happened is they didn't come in in July. They didn't come in in August, they came in September, so we kind of got.
Good catch, by the way.
Well, I just want it to be right now.
Yeah, because we were kind of all over the place.
You want, you want a motion for those changes?
Yes.
I make a motion to move those changes. That was.
June meeting?
Yeah.
Of the June thirteenth meeting. Or second? All in favor? So then I think we can move on to a planner's report.
And so the one thing I have that I want to discuss with you. We had talked about this on the on the phone when I first started, and I found a fee schedule update from December of twenty twenty three that was adopted by this board, and I found record of that in your past meeting minutes. Now, the issue is that this board does not have the authority to adopt fee schedule changes. It needs to go on to the select board and be formally adopted after a public hearing. I cannot find record of that public hearing ever happening nor adoption by the select board. That being said, this is in some way an opportunity because what I would suggest.
Well, let me just tell you that we did do another recommended schedule earlier this year to the select board.
I can't, it was it the December twenty twenty three?
No, it would have been, it would have been earlier this year. It was in the spring.
It was in the spring of this year.
Maybe.
Okay.
I don't, I didn't bring my book with me tonight, but I probably have it here. So we had a, we discussed it a couple of meetings. There are still people there, yeah. So. Mr. and Mrs. Cohen, did you hear that we approved your project? They're not listening. We can, we can normally give them that, they don't have it. Said something for it. Yes, fees. Those new fees get.
Those new fees get. Last one I had did not have a date on it. If that's wrong.
All right. Um, so, so it should be in the select, isn't it?
No, they never went forward to adopt anything. They didn't hold a public hearing. Nothing was ever accepted.
So I'll send you this.
So I have, this is the one that I have, what I would like to introduce to you all. And I'll share on screen. Okay. Well, what I was hoping to be able to share on the screen was change, potential changes to the fee schedule. And I think we'll have to discuss this further at the November meeting. So I'll put the memo that I wrote and the accompanying potential changes in your packet. But what I would like to just bring to your attention is the value of the project. Um, the way that you have the site plan and shoreline project review set up right now. Um, works very well for code, like code enforcement projects because they'll have an architect on board. They have construction drawings already done at that point. They are fully aware of what the project will cost. But typically when somebody's just coming to the planning board for their site plan, they don't have, they might not have an architect on board yet. They don't have the full construction drawings that they'll be submitting for their, um, building permit, which is sort of a separate review process. They don't have a lot of these items and they usually do not know the full value of the project. So I wanted to bring up the potential of changing that to be based on the type of project. And use this as sort of an opportunity to at least recoup the costs of my time reviewing the project. So get some revenue to at least match, you know, the hours that I spend preparing the applications for your review. So what you'll end up seeing in the packet for the next meeting is a proposal that I put together based on my invoices from doing this work in other towns with your current ordinance and how you break up the type of projects. So conversion of an existing building's use, but no site work. That's a pretty easy review on my part. Might take me an hour or two to put the memo together with the findings. So I based this on my actual hourly rate, um, with, you know, a little bit extra in some cases. And then in some cases it doesn't fully cover the cost. So it all sort of evens out. The thought process there is that most of the time, like in larger municipalities, and even Sabatys does this, they are billing the applicant directly for the cost of any professional review, including their planner's review. This town doesn't like to do escrows. There's some, some administrative stuff that comes along with that. So if we can at least set our fees to be approximately what my review time is, it can cover the cost of my contract with the town and, and really kind of.
Are the fees based on like square footage of dwelling or?
Yeah, that's what I had suggested doing instead is, uh, square footage of whatever's being proposed.
Capable square footage or square footage, including like garages and, and solar buildings?
I said gross floor area because that's how your ordinance describes it.
Great way of doing it.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and then you also have some, um, you know, some other thing, miscellaneous things like solar energy facilities. Now, those take a lot of time for me to review. Um, so I think doing some sort of tiered system based on square foot of disturbed land there probably makes sense. And that's what I had proposed, um, because those kinds of things take the longest amount of time for, from my perspective.
Grow square footage would include like second floor as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Habitable or usable?
Um, I think I would make it match your, your ordinance. So I think, I think it would be, I would have to clarify and I can get back to you on that question.
It's like, some dwellings have, you know, the first floor and a walkout basement. That they typically finish. Others have a single floor and then others have, it's a two-story structure.
Yeah. So I would say that, that this sort of type of project based, uh, fee schedule would be specific to what your current fee schedule calls site plan review. But that's not what your ordinance calls it. So I also matched what your ordinance actually calls it. Um, so non-residential or multifamily development review. And then shorelands doesn't take me long at all. So with shoreline projects like the one we reviewed tonight, you know, that might take me two hours of time. So I just did like a, a base fee to kind of cover that. Yep.
So one thing we have to fit in, and so our ordinance requires notices to these abutters, our people within 500 feet or whatever it is. And those costs are $10 something, $150 a letter.
So you, your ordinance just requires certified mail, uh, not certified with receipt. So you can just bring it to the post office and that would be six, uh, actually it's $5.58 right now for a butter.
Yeah.
Uh, with the postage rates that just went up in July. So I rounded up to $6 to include printing at the town office. And I also reached out to the Kennebec Journal because we are supposed to be, we are supposed to have been putting, um, a notice in the local newspaper. And, uh, that's supposed to run twice whenever we hold a public hearing. And so I asked them to quote me what that would be. And I also would recommend that we take a public notification fee and that we take that each time that a public hearing is held. So for some of your applications, you're tabling things multiple times with public hearings. Um, or if somebody doesn't show up and we have to table it. So that fee, just so you know, would work out to be $230. That's the newspaper cost plus $6 for a butter.
One, one, I got one question. We talk about the ordinance. Times have changed. Why do we change the ordinance and get rid of the KJ? Cause I don't get the KJ. I don't even go online and I don't know how many people don't. But go back into, put a notice on the site, uh, our website. Cause that exists now, which before never existed.
So it's actually, this is something that frustrates me as well, but it is a state statute thing.
State statute.
It's a state statute. Okay. It's that. Okay.
And every, every, um, legal issue class that I've ever taken in the last 20 some odd years. They tell you that yes, you can do it. Just return, just send it out. You go to court and it gets thrown out if you don't have that little green card saying that they got noticed.
Definitely received it.
You, we need to keep the little green cards.
Which is the $10.
Which is the $10 something.
That's what we've been doing is sending the $10.
I went to court, my second year here and I had the little green card. And they said, nope, you were noticed. What, what the, what I wrote, what I planned, it was for minor site plan, a minor site, not here. Minor site plan that I used to send the cards out to.
Yeah. If, so even if the post office certifies your mailing list.
Yeah, I don't know.
They used to be, they used to be another postal thing. What'd they call it? A certificate of mailing.
Yes. So I think that's the only thing that your ordinance requires is that the post office signs off on it with a stamp. And that's what we did in other municipalities that I worked in.
Maybe that'll work. I don't know.
Yeah. We, how many, how many, how many, how many times do you get something in your, in your box? Cause we have a P O box that isn't yours. Or I know, and between this date and that date, I get an invoice from this company and I go. Where might that be? And you know, there's no telling if they put it in the box and somebody gets it and it's not mine. I go, hey, this isn't mine, but. Somebody else may just put it in the inbox.
So I, um, I'm going through an appeal right now in another community. And one of the issues that came up was in that community's ordinance, they had something that said, regardless of whether or not somebody didn't get the notice, as long as we can prove that we attempted to reach out to them, that is sufficient. And that's what's being sort of discussed in court right now. So I will let you, I'll keep you posted about how it turns out.
Well, and I said, he said, we said, yeah. If you can get it returned from the post office saying undeliverable or something, that's proved too. But you used to do that with the green cards. You know, I'd get the whole envelope back out.
So regardless, I think regardless of this conversation, we need to be having a fee to recoup those costs. Whether that's the full $10 or the $6 certified. Um, I just wanted to introduce this to you so that when I send it to you, you're not like.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. And I did do, I just want to know, I put together a whole memo with some analysis around how this would comp to other towns fees. Because some of it is going to end up being a little bit more expensive, I think. Um, for certain types of the site plan projects specifically, it's a little bit more expensive. And it's definitely more expensive for the solar projects. Um, but then for subdivision, we're, we're actually lower than other towns in the surrounding area. So I put together a whole memo that shows how this would compare as well.
That's what we looked at when we did this one earlier this year, which I'll send to you too. So. I mean, and we noticed we left off, we didn't do a different fee for when someone comes back for an amendment. And, you know.
When it just added, and Isabel.
Yeah.
To their payroll.
Right.
So their whole fee structure is now changing.
That's correct.
Because there's, uh, that was one that I noticed theirs is right now significantly lower than everyone else.
It won't, it won't be short. They just started working this month.
Okay. So, um, and then I did add an amendment to an approved subdivision, but I don't know that I have one for previously approved, um, what you're now calling site plans.
Yeah. Yeah. So we had a, we had one last meeting, which was the, one of the sub, solar projects. Actually wanted to shrink the size of the project. So it really didn't, didn't have much of an impact as far I think is abutters or the community would be concerned.
And didn't they send the abutter letters out? Haven't they?
They did in that one.
Yeah.
So we had this discussion before as to whether we should require the developer to send out the notices. Well, we got concerned that how did we really verify that they did it? So we used to do it. We used to do an escrow. And then the auditors didn't like the escrow because we're sitting on some money now, still.
I think, I think they still are.
Um, there was a list, we should get a current. But yeah, I think that would be good.
Wiped it clean. The new auditor wiped it clean.
Well, what'd they do with it?
Yeah, let it go.
To get the money.
To the general fund. They wiped it clean.
Because we were supposed to do, like, one of them was on the power line, right? That was a big one. That went to TIF. That went to the TIF.
We can, yeah, I can discuss, do some tracking down of that, but yeah, just, I mean, just so you know, so that when you get this, you're not like, why is she suggesting we charge so much money?
Well, that's why we tried to change this to.
We're also getting asked to review the ordinances again. That came up at the last select.
Well, there need to be some changes to the.
Have to bring them up to the 21st century.
Yeah. Well, as you know, we know that there's nothing about the, uh, third party inspections. Couple of other items. Hopefully we've got a list somewhere. Remind us of some of these things.
To do with trails and stuff like that.
Um, and then in terms of what I have for your next agenda, uh, so for the one on the 31st, we'll have that, um, Jellystone project. And I have, um, also a potential solar project, um, that is deemed to complete, well, that I have deemed to complete with my review, but that you need to be complete with your review. Um, and then on the November agenda, we will have the Main Street housing project and.
Jellystone again.
And ju, and probably Jellystone again.
What's the solar one that you?
Um, this is a solar project at, uh, 65 Berry Road. I don't know that this has ever come in front of you.
No, no, no. It's taking the third field of, uh, behind, go down past the tracks. They, 10 years ago, they had asked to get a parking area for a truck on this property. So I allowed the first 50 yards to be cleared, uh, as codes officer. And then now they're, because that's cleared now more because they went out and treat it. Um, now it's an open field and they want to put a solar panel, so.
So have they actually filed something with the town?
Where is that, Dave?
Yes, yep.
Down Berry Road from you, go down Berry Road across the tracks.
Yeah.
There's the trailer on the left-hand side. There's that little cut in that was just a little parking area.
Yeah.
Way in there.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
There's a field way back there?
It was a snow of real, as the trail going to that field.
The road would be covered with soil, okay?
Yeah. That's all, that's one of the reasons they want us to review it and say, that's enough.
So we had a, we had a request from the Trails Committee to come to this meeting to talk about the Main Street senior housing. And I sort of said to them, you know, we can't have you come in and talk about a project that we don't have yet. And that the applicants aren't here on.
Yeah.
So, um, I said, you might want to give some input in terms of what you folks are looking for that we could integrate into the comp plan, but.
That's a different.
Yeah, I would, um, just caution everybody with some of the bigger projects that we have coming up. I know that you all are very involved and I know that you hear from people. Where we will always get dinged in court is on process and ex parte communications and, you know, other things. Just so you're, you're aware, I have removed all of your emails from the website. Um, we have been asking that all comment is routed through me now. So you'll get it in your packet, um, with everything else that you get.
That's good. Mine was never there anyway, so.
Right. So, so yeah, I mean, I just would, if people come up to you in the grocery store or on the street, just caution them that they need to come to the public hearing. They, yeah, that's where we'll get really dinged. So just a reminder, yeah, as we're moving forward with some of these projects, so.
Well, talking amongst ourselves while we're still on Zoom, we.
Well, you know, you shouldn't.
Right.
I, you know, that if.
If you, if you're three, if you're.
So it's a project that's come through and it's not, it's, you know, we've already permitted it. That's probably not an issue. I mean, it's technically, if more than two members are together and talk about a project.
It's a meeting?
Well, if it's more than two, it's a me, it's considered a meeting, right?
Cause your quorum is five.
A quorum is three.
So after you're three or more, you can't.
Right.
If you're two.
Right. Yeah. It's more than two.
True.
More than two. So you gotta be.
So just as we're getting some larger projects, be cognizant of that. Ask people to come to the public hearing. Let them know that, uh, the website has been updated with a public folder. They can look at the project and submit their comments. I put my contact information up there. So if they want to submit a letter instead of coming to the meeting, that's fine, but they shouldn't be sending it directly to any of you.
And I get, I get stuff all the time. I hopefully not anymore. You know, I get phone calls. You know, it used to be anytime someone got in touch with the town office. And Andy wasn't there, then they'd say, oh, call Steve O'Donnell.
Yeah. So we're trying to get out of that habit.
Well, let get me in my office. I give out my office number.
Yeah.
But yeah, so the Trails Committee is very concerned about development and how it impacts trails. So there's a, there's a group that I expect will hear on any major project that there's a trail nearby or through.
Like, like snowmobile, I was just talking.
No, well, it's more than just snowmobiles.
Snowmobile is not involved in its Trails Committee to that extent.
Are there any trails around that development?
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
There is?
All on RSU two property.
Yeah. Oh.
But it connects into the back of this.
So that's all I have.
Okay. Public comment. Anyone from the public? We have no one here left. Anyone on Zoom have any kind of comment to make to us?
You'll have to unmute yourself.
Guess not.
Guess not. So we have to send a motion to.
Introductions? Cause we didn't do that.
What's that?
Introductions.
Of all the members?
All the members. I know, my name's Larry Sosia.
Oh, oh, right. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I'm Dave Mills.
You know me.
Yes.
Grant?
Bonnie Green.
I didn't want to forget that.
No, thank you. Thank you. I sort of started at the beginning and then jumped through to all the other stuff that was going on.
I make a motion to adjourn.
It's nine yet.
So we'll come back briefly on the thirty first, just to.